We'll call the regular meeting of council to order, seven o'clock on November fourteenth. We have an agenda before us. Looking for any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is. Resolution seven point two needs to be deleted.
Get Council seven point two, please. Removed from your agenda. Any other changes to the agenda?
No, there's none.
Motion to adopt the changes in the agenda. Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor Smoak. All in favor? Motion to carry the agenda as amended, moved by Counselor Madichuk, seconded by Counselor Blake Ellis. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. General inquiries. Just before I go to the general public, I just, I think it was Mr. Chong asked a question a couple of meetings ago in regards to CSO funding. I can report that the city has received $300,000 in May of this year towards the program. And additionally, that would be for the 2015-16 year. And we received another $150,000 in September of this year. So that's half of this year's commitment. I would assume we'll receive the remaining 150 before the end of the provincial year-end, which is March of seventeen. So to date, we've received 450 of the 600 that's been requested. So, general inquiries. Will the general public come forward, state your name and ask your question, please?
Yes, my name's Dave Tugwood, and I've got a question, I've got a couple of questions regarding, regarding safety in that. I've noticed since the construction was finished on Cree Road, the road construction, the sign for the southbound traffic marking the crosswalk at the intersection of Cree Road and Juniper Drive has not been replaced. And last week, there was a very near serious incident because a lady with a walker was crossing the road. Some traffic came to a stop there, but then she fell down on the ground and a couple of people got out to help her. But because there was no sign that were, that way, a vehicle came by flying down the curb lane and passed, and passed all the traffic that was stopped there. Because like, there was no, there's no sign up there indicating the crosswalk. Now, I'm just wondering, it's been about two and a half months since that was completed, so I'm just wondering why there's no sign up there yet indicating the crosswalk.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Administration, if you could take note, we'll have the sign replaced ASAP. Thank you.
I've got another, another question. This is regarding, like, first responders getting access to apartment buildings locally. Because I know, like, the apartment buildings at 207 and 211 Cree Road, they have, like, they have the block devices which are supposed to be accessible. But several times this summer, I've noticed that ambulance personnel have come to the, come to those buildings, but they've been unable to get in unless somebody, unless they knock on the window and get somebody to come down and open the door for them. And I'm just wondering why they're not utilizing the, the lock, the facility that's there for them to obtain a key to get into the building. Because I know myself, if I was lying on the floor having had a heart attack or something, I would certainly like the first responders to get in to attend to me as quickly as possible.
Okay, we'll pass it on to the department to see if we have any issues of gaining entry into any of the facilities in our community.
Okay. And a third one is regarding, regarding the community safety officers and, and the lack of enforcement over section 141-5 of the Highway Traffic Act, which states, clearly states in this booklet that was prepared by Sonia Wiseman, that that is within their, within their jurisdiction to enforce. And not only are they not enforcing it, they're also violating it themselves. I'm not sure if you know what that section reads, section 141-5, but it states that "No person shall park or stand a vehicle at the curb or edge of roadway A where it intersects a pedestrian corridor, or B on the approach to a pedestrian corridor and within fifteen meters thereof." Now, on, on Selkirk Drive, like, in the, you've got the crosswalk across from the post office. I've seen your community safety officers on numerous occasions parked right within that, within that pedestrian corridor, the fifteen meters on either side of it, even though it is, there are signs there saying no stopping. And they're stopped in there just to deal with homeless people sitting on the steps of the post office. And I don't know, that's not really considered to be an emergency. And when you go around, when you go around the corner from there, there's another crosswalk right at the corner of where the one-way, one-way street comes out, and there's vehicles parked in front of, in front of Domino's Pizza. And nobody isn't, nobody's enforcing that. And that's a very serious safety issue. And not only that, but a couple of those tickets a day would probably pay the salaries of the community safety officers.
We'll pass that on to administration. In regards to the stopping and dealing with specific instances, all of the vehicles, the CSO vehicles, the emergency vehicles, and the RCMP vehicles, in the execution of their duties, if warranted, can basically stop the vehicle and deal with the situation, whether there's parking or no parking, in that relation. In regards to long-term parking, or if vehicles are parked where they're not supposed to be parked for business, other than the duties of the position, we will certainly raise that with the supervisor.
Well, there's nothing, there's a section, it's in the Highway Traffic Act about emergency vehicles, but CSOs are not, don't fall into that category, so, thank you.
Any other questions, general public? Please state your name and ask your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me know the information about funding for CSO.
You're welcome.
And I think on your item number seven point four, I think, resolution, and resolution number 2016-231, like, I only, I understand it's about the payroll, it's about $547,000 and so many cents. And general, general account payable check totaling 2.19981808. Is it possible for me to get a copy of your itemized check spending?
I think what you're asking for is, yeah, I think what you're asking for is the check register. And I'll go to, I'll go to administration in regards to the release of the check register. Gary? Or Jenny?
So I'll be able to get a copy? Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
And just in further to that, so that the general public can understand, the check registers are presented to the finance committee the week before it comes, this resolution comes to council, and is reviewed by the finance committee and then signed off. This resolution comes forward to the council as a whole, to pass the resolution to adopt the check registers that have been reviewed by the finance committee and the, and the administration. And as per the request, the check register is a public document and is available upon request. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the adoption of minutes. First up, we have the public hearing of conditional use number 002-2016, October 31, 2016. This is resolution 2016-224, moved by Counselor Foley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Valentino. Be resolved at the minutes of the public hearing for conditional use numbers 002-216, held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, October 31, 2016, be adopted as circulated. Administration, anything to support?
No.
Counsel, call the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. Next, we have 4.2, public hearing by bylaw, 1944-2016, zoning bylaw amendment for Char Bay, October 31, 2016, resolution 2016-225, moved by Counselor Foley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Valentino. Be resolved at the minutes of the public hearing for bylaw 1944-2016, zoning bylaw amendment for Char Bay, held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, October 31, 2016, be adopted as circulated. Administration, anything to add?
Counsel.
Counsel, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. Next, we have a regular meeting of council, October 31, 2016, resolution 2016-226, moved by Counselor Smoak, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of council, held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, October 31, 2016, be adopted as circulated. Administration, anything to add?
Counsel.
Counsel, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. And finally, the organizational meeting of council, November 2, 2016, resolution 2016-227, moved by Counselor Smoak, seconded by Deputy Mayor Valentino. Be resolved at the minutes of the organizational meeting of council, held in council chambers, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Wednesday, November 2, 2016, be adopted as circulated. Administration, anything to add?
No.
Counsel, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. We're now moving into development, or sorry, committee reports. The first one up is Development Review Committee, and we'll go to the chair, Counselor Madichuk.
Matt will be doing the report today. So, this is the November 14, 2016, DRC report. Our committee members are listed, as well as the administration. The noteworthy change is our Counselor and Chair, Matt Madichuk. And we thank our fellow chair, Jimie LaVine, who is still on the committee. The role of the Development Review Committee to make recommendations to council on all land development issues, including proposed development plans and/or zoning bylaw amendments, subdivision applications, variation applications, conditional use applications, proposal for development that deviates from existing development controls, to review and report to council on all matters respecting the sale and development of municipal land, including issues related to zoning, and to consider and report on all matters related to building inspection services. Our committee break was in August of 2016, in the summer. We had an outgoing building inspector, Margaret Summerly, so we'd like to thank her for her time, five years at the city. And the department will be training a new building inspector at the end of November 2016. Some highlights of professional developments and conferences attended. I'm still undergoing the registered professional planner process under the mentorship of our city manager. Our building inspector attended the 2016 Manitoba Building Officials' Association Conference more recently. Our 2016 strategic initiatives, there's a list there, they are ongoing. Main highlight is number five, revisiting our zoning bylaw and implementing tools to attract investment, i.e. our financial assistance bylaw, which we are working on continuously, refining that, and hopefully bringing it forward in the near future. 2016 building inspection reports, so the total year-to-date, we have seventy-two building permits for a total construction value of $11,163,214.48. Many new developments are currently under construction or have been completed from 2015 into 2016. Some of our noteworthy projects, new co-op gas bar and convenience store, Cambridge Affordable Housing, the Youth Crisis Center, Saski Rapids Hotel, Shell Gas Station Convenience Store. The first and second quarter of 2016, we'll see several applications come forth, most notably, some of the schools that were being undertaken, such as Riverside School, Youth Crisis Center, Deerwood School, Cancer Care Chemotherapy Room, and the mammography room at Thompson General Hospital. Westwood Mall is currently under exterior alterations, commercial development property of a three-story, 12-unit transitional housing unit, commercial development of a new MLCC standalone retail unit, projected commercial developments is a two-story, 31-suite Lion Seniors Manor. Below, we have comparables for 2015 and 2016, just for you to review. Some noteworthy projects upcoming in 2017, the Subway Restaurant relocation and build at the Interior Inn property, 128 Hemlock, that's a Manitoba housing development, MLCC relocation, and again, the Thompson Lion Seniors Manor. Our capital projects update, the department has completed approximately 95% of the 2016 program. Our capital projects were the Cree Road resurfacing up to Fox Bay, Selkirk Phase One road resurfacing, integrated bike lanes along Selkirk, pedestrian sidewalk renewal, multi-use path system expansion along Cree Road, the fire hall exhaust system, our bathroom renovation within the fire hall, continuation of water main renewal projects. Remaining items are primarily aesthetic, line painting, signage replacement. The department is well underway in the planning stages of our capital program for 2017. Throughout budget 2017, the program will be finalized and tenders will be released for the major projects in early 2017. Additional planning and community development projects in the works, street lighting strategy, our land drainage bylaw, and parkland dedication bylaw, we're reviewing that right now. Conversations have begun with major stakeholders north of the Burnwood River with respect to the five acre lots, and continuation of the Yonniwin development.
Anything else on the report? Seeing none, or, calling, Counselor Smoak?
The 2016 building inspection report, total year-to-date for 2016, I think that should be instead of 2015.
Received for information. Thank you. Next, we're now moving on to correspondence. We have a letter from Eileen Clark, Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations, in regards to the 2016 general support grant. This is to Mayor Reeves. I'm pleased to advise that the 2016 general support grant has been directly deposited to your account. The grant provides municipalities with funding to offset their payment of provincial health and post-secondary education levy payroll tax. The general support grant is calculated based on 4.3% of the prior year's actual eligible payroll costs for the municipal payrolls between $1.25 million and $2.5 million, and 2.15% for municipal payrolls over $2.5 million. Should you have any questions regarding the calculation of this grant, please contact the Municipal Finance and Advisory Services Branch. Sincerely, Eileen Clark, Honorable Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations. Administration, anything to support? Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll receive for information. Next, we have a letter from Eileen Clark, Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations, in regards to the municipal road and bridge program. Mayor Reeves, municipal road and bridge program, I'm pleased to advise that the grant payment under municipal road improvement component of the municipal road and bridge program has been deposited in your municipality's account. The payment is based on a recent claim from your municipality for approved projects under this program. The municipal road improvement program provides up to 50% cost shared funding for the renewal of existing roads and the construction of new roads in communities outside Winnipeg. Our government is pleased to support the renewal of municipal infrastructure in Manitoba. Sincerely, Eileen Clark, Minister of Indigenous and Municipal Relations. Administration, anything to add?
Just indicate that this was the $400,000 that we had applied for on this annual grant, and was put forth towards our 2016 capital road paving program.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Received for information. Thank you. Next, we have a letter from Kelvin Shepard, President and Chief Executive Officer of Manitoba Hydro, in response to a letter of July 29, 2016. Dear Mayor Fenske, thank you for your letter of July 29, 2016, regarding the upcoming end of the multi-year debris management agreement between Manitoba Hydro, City Thompson, and Menar Partigus Solutions. Manitoba Hydro is pleased that the debris program, debris removal program, excuse me, has proven to be beneficial in minimizing erosion and controlling debris on the Burnwood River. As well, we are also pleased that the program has had positive impact within the community. As you know, Manitoba Hydro is committed to strengthening Manitoba's hydro partnership with the city of Thompson, and to enhancing the safe navigation for all resource users on the impacted waterways. The debris management program is one component of the waterways management program, which falls under the responsibility of Mark Sweeney, Acting Division Manager, Indigenous Relations. Therefore, please contact Mark, and he's provided the contact information. To schedule a meeting with him at your next available opportunity, yours truly, yours truly is from Kevin Shepard, President and CEO of Manitoba Hydro. Administration?
That the action is that to refer this correspondence to the Development Review Committee, and have administration follow up with, with Mark Sweeney on this program.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none. Next letter is from Scott Hamel, VP Communications and Stakeholder Relations of the Northern Health Region, in regards to community engagement strategy. Dear Mayor Fenske and Honorable Counsel, the Northern Health Region's vision is healthy people in a healthy north. A sentiment that I know is shared by many groups and organizations throughout the north. As we strive to achieve the vision, we are dedicated to provide, to providing quality, accessible, and compassionate health services. I'm writing to you today to request the opportunity to meet with yourself and perhaps members of your organization in Thompson, to look at ways we can cooperatively to maximizing the health and wellness of citizens in your community. As a health region, respect, compassion, and collaboration are among our core values. The Board of Directors and Senior Management of the Northern Health Region are committed to active, meaningful dialogue with communities, groups, and individuals throughout the region. The goal of our community engagement strategy is to ensure that the organization is grounded and connected to the people we serve. We recognize that consultation with community leaders such as yourself is invaluable in providing our staff, who are committed to fostering innovation with the insight and feedback that will assist in meeting our shared goal of healthy people in a healthy north. I look forward to the opportunity of visiting your community and meeting with you. I will have my community engagement coordinator, Kelly Steele, follow up with your office to schedule employment and answer your questions you may have. Sincerely, Scott Hamel, VP Communications and Stakeholder Relations. Administration, Carrie?
So, according to the letter, obviously Kelly Steele has been in contact with our administration, and we're in the process of setting up a meal with the, or a meeting with the Northern Health Region and council.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none. We'll move forward into resolutions. Seven point one, a resolution to approve the attendance at the Assembly of Manitoba Chief Secretary for Gathering with elders and traditional knowledge holders of Manitoba. This is resolution 2016-228, moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Ellis. Be resolved, council approved the attendance of Mayor Fenske at a gathering with the elders and traditional knowledge holders of Manitoba at the Turtle Lodge in the Sangin First Nation on November 18, 2016. Be further resolved that attendance at this event be borne under the terms and conditions under bylaw 1897-2013. We'll go to administration for support.
So, as far as counsel's package, there's a letter requesting the invite to the mayor for this event, and also a memo for administration as to the, the cost for the mayor to attend.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor. We just passed the resolution last meeting about you attend the AMM. So, would it be cheaper to change the airfare, like, pay the 150 bucks instead of buying another airfare? Just, just to accommodate the, the traveling, and, and also, like, the couple of days from the meeting? Would it be cheaper that way? Would you consider doing that?
Thank you for the question. That's actually already been done. Travel coordination has been done by our council assistant, Angie English. And basically, flights have been arranged to fly out Thursday evening, to attend on Friday the event, and stay down to attend AMM Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and fly home Thursday, or Wednesday night. So it's one flight for two events. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. Next, we have the resolution that was removed, which was seven point two, so we'll move to seven point three. A resolution to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with United Steelworkers Local 8223-02 and 8223-12. Resolution 2016-230, moved by Counselor Foley, seconded by Counselor Byer. Be resolved the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Thompson and United Steelworkers Local 8223-02 and the local 8223-12, dated March 1st, December, or, 2016 to February 29, 2020, hereby ratified by the city of Thompson. We'll go to administration for support.
Just to indicate that the city had been involved in negotiations with USW over the last number of months to, to undertake a new collective bargaining agreement, which expired February 29 of 2016. So the, an agreement has been in place and has been ratified by the union on November the 4th. This is the final sort of step by council to consider this resolution to, to approve the agreements. And really, the intent would be to release a joint news release tomorrow upon approval by council tonight.
Thank you. Go to counsel for your comment. Counsel Wong?
Okay, thank you. I would have to abstain this resolution due to, because I'm the former HR chair, and I'm not involved with the process. So, I don't see any document, I don't see what is the benefit or this, the benefit or not benefit to the city or the worker. And I have no information. And I'm glad that, I'd like to move forward, but I cannot vote again, I mean, favor or gain, so I am abstaining. Thank you.
There, Counselor Madichuk.
Local 8223-02 and local 8223-12. Who does this encompass?
The 8223-02 is primarily the inside workers. And 8223-12, which was formerly USW 7911, which is primarily the outside workers.
Inside meaning?
Inside meaning clerical office staff.
Any other questions, counsel? Call, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Sorry. Do that again. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Counselor Wong, you provided your reason for abstention. Counselor Claudia, your reason for abstention?
Same.
Same being what?
Same being that we don't have any information on it. I'm currently the chair of HR.
The resolution passes. Next, we have resolution seven point four, a resolution to approve October check registers. This is resolution 2016-231, moved by Counselor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Byer, or, sorry, Deputy Mayor Valentino, seconded by Counselor Byer. Check register dated October 2016, general accounts payable checks totaling $2,199,818.8. Payroll dated October 14, 2016, $273,0898.8. Payroll dated October 30, 2016, $273,963.68 for a subtotal of $547,862.48 for a grand total of $2,747,680.56. The accounts contained in this check register have been reviewed by the Members of Finance and Administration Committee. We'll go to administration for support. Deputy Mayor Valentino?
That is on the November 7 Finance and Management Committee. That we reviewed and discussed this and brought forward for tonight.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Madichuk?
I have a couple of questions. First, we have check number 0022945, 22956, 22965, 22968, and 22973, each in the amount of $700 even to individuals, a total of $3,500. I'm just wondering, there's no indication of what that's for. I'm wondering what that is for.
Jenny, if you have the information, please. If you don't, we can get back to you.
$100 is the refund of the homeowner's tax grant. So, it normally comes in on your tax bills, but if they hadn't applied for it prior to January 1st of 2016, they wouldn't have got on their tax bill, so they would apply for it separately. So, this is the refund of that $700 to the taxpayer.
Secondly, check number 0023039 for a light tower, $13,248.48. I'm just wondering, was that a rental or a purchase?
Administration?
I understand that, is that, that was a purchase for the landfill.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions of council? Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the cost share for the annual fur tables. Resolution 2016-232, moved by Counselor Byer, seconded by Counselor Smoak. Whereas the Manitoba Trappers Association, along with sustainable development, will be sponsoring the annual fur tables at St. Joseph's Hall in Thompson, Manitoba, on Friday, December 16, and Saturday, December 17, 2016. Now, therefore be resolved, the council approved the cost share coffee for the 2016 annual fur table with the Thompson Chamber of Commerce and the Thompson Regional Airport Authority at a cost not to exceed $350. We'll go to administration for support.
This has been a regular resolution that council has considered over the last number of years, cost sharing the, this event for the fur table.
We'll go to the mover, Counselor Byer.
I'm really glad that we continue this tradition now. I think it's fair to call it, which was started years ago, a couple of administrations ago, between us and the city and Chamber of Commerce. Just like to let people know, though, that this is not a good start to the trapping year. So, if anybody can make the time to go and show their support, just by visiting, looking at the displays, and, and maybe getting to know some of the trappers, it might, in all likelihood, will not be a terribly good year for the trappers, so.
Thank you. Counselor Claudia?
Thank you. This actually has been going on for 20 years, so, or maybe in excess of 20 years, 20 years that I'm aware of. It has a huge financial impact on our city. It's one day where, don't go to Walmart, the shelves will be empty, because it just, it has a huge financial impact for us. And as far as attending the, the fur tables go, they have continual demonstrations that I'm sure everyone in the north would find interesting. So, I would encourage that, based on what Counselor Byer said, that yes, everybody should go and, and see what they have to offer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denes, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve the method of collection for local improvement plan for the wastewater treatment plant. This is resolution 2016-22, or, sorry, 2016-233, moved by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Byer. Whereas a local improvement plan has been prepared for the design and build of the new wastewater treatment plant facility, and whereas notice- build of the new wastewater treatment plant facility, and whereas notice has been mailed out to all potential ratepayers, and whereas the proposed method for calculation is a utility rate rider subject for approval by the Public Utilities Board, P U B, and a rate per unit of frontage. And there, now therefore be it resolved, the Council approved the collection of seventy-five percent of the local improvement plan through a utility rate rider and, and collect the remaining twenty-five percent through a rate per unit frontage. Now therefore be resolved, be it further resolved, that Counsel authorized Administration to submit an application to the P U B for approval in principle for the debenture recovery through a utility rate rider. We'll go to Administration for support.
Just to indicate, obviously, that we've been in discussions with the Public Utilities Board, and, uh, as part of their process, they require this resolution. Uh, so on consideration, uh, from Counsel tonight, uh, then it's, we will, uh, draft a letter up for them so that they can, uh, undertake the, uh, their initial approval of the, uh, the rate rider, uh, portion of our local improvement plan.
We'll go to the mover, Counsel Ellis. Counsel, any questions or comments? Counsel Madichuk?
Just want to state that I always have been against this method, and I remain against this method, as I don't believe, uh, frontage of a property has anything to do with how much you're gonna flush your toilet.
Thank you. Counsel, or Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Just that, uh- Yeah, I've had many discussions about this, and this was, been at the Finance and Admin Agenda item for many of our meetings to get to this process so that we can get this application to PUB for approval in principle.
Uh, any other que- questions or comments? Counsel Clota?
Well, I'm going to support it. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I don't have the answers on how we can do it better, so therefore I will support it.
Counsel, or Counselor Byer?
I'll be supporting it also. I, I think, I think this is one of those situations, it doesn't matter how we, uh, approach it or tackle it, it's going to appear unfair to some people. Um, the Public Utilities Board has made it clear that what we came up with before was not acceptable. Uh, through discussions with, um, uh, the people who we've contracted to, to do this work for us, this is the direction that it appears the Public Utilities Board will accept. If we continue to not get Public Utilities Board approval, we're going to be pushing back the construction date of that wastewater treatment plant, and we cannot afford to do that, either financially or from an environmental, uh, an environmental point of view. We just can't. So, it just, let people be aware of that.
Thank you. Counsel, any other question? Uh, Counsel Foley?
Uh, just, I'd like to state that, uh, you know, I'd like to thank Administration for all the time that they've put in. We've had, bounced this back and forth a lot. Um, and we've had some great discussion, uh, within Counsel in regards to it. And, uh, this method, I do feel, is the, uh, as a, to the major, uh, general public within the city is the fairest way to go. Uh, nobody likes to pay anything more. Um, but unfortunately, we're put in the position we're in, and I, I will be supporting it, as I, I feel it's the, uh, of the options that we've been presented with is definitely the best way to go.
Thank you. Counsel Wong?
Recall the vote, please.
Counsel Indulge, I'll also make a comment on the resolution. Uh, from the perspective of the, the history on our rate application, uh, Counsel will, will recall, and the general public will recall, is that there was a hearing, uh, called by the City of Thompson, and then, uh, subsequently, uh, called by the, uh, Water Services Board in regards, or, sorry, Municipal Board, in regards to objections heard. Uh, from those objections, it was, uh, indicated that the majority, uh, felt that the unfairness in that application was that it wasn't based on consumption, and it was based on meter size. And there were, uh, subsequent presentations made, uh, against using the meter size as the determining factor as to the, the payment, and that consumption would be a more fairer way to, to move forward. Subsequently, in preparing the second, uh, application, we've been advised that to put all of your, uh, potential revenue in one basket, one source of revenue was not advisable, and that the, uh, Board would want to see, uh, some guarantee of annual income against the cost, uh, as well as, uh, any alternatives that the, that the city would, would, uh, provide. Uh, Counsel with Administration's, uh, support, and I want to thank, uh, Administration for all of the hard work they've done in the background. Counsel is fully aware of the discussions, uh, that have taken place. There's been lots of debate in regards to the fairness of all the proposals, uh, of which there were, uh, four versions, narrowed down to two, narrowed down to one. Um, and it was the consensus of this Counsel to bring forward the recommendation that seventy-five percent of the revenue would be tied to, uh, consumption, and twenty-five percent would be tied to, uh, frontage. The frontage portion is a guaranteed, uh, revenue stream of, uh, for this debenture payment, uh, which should satisfy the Board in, in regards to, uh, guaranteed funding. The seventy-five percent, although it is identified as a revenue stream, uh, can and may fluctuate based on consumption. Those, some will use more, some will use less, and they will pay accordingly. But let me be abundantly clear to the general public, the Counsel has been fully aware and fully briefed on all of the options. There have been numerous discussions, numerous debates, on the four options presented, down to two, down to one. And this is the presentation that's been forward, brought forward in form, in the form of a resolution. So, moving forward, I'll call for the question and a recorded vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Voting in favor, Counsel Foley, Counselor Smoak, Deputy Mayor Valentito, Valentino, Counselor Clota, Counselor Byer, Counselor Ellis, Mayor Dennis Fenske. Voting against, Counselor Wong, Counsel Madichuk. Passes. Thank you. Uh, next is a resolution to approve the M O U between F C M Sisal and the City of Thompson. Uh, Resolution two zero one six two three four, moved by Counsel Smoak, seconded by Counsel Byer. Whereas City of Thompson and Federation of Canadian Municipalities, F C M, have agreed to establish a formal relationship to support the implementation of Sustainable Inclusive Communities in Latin America Sisal Program. And, uh, whereas the Memorandum of Understanding is intended to formalize the principles of cooperation between the City of Thompson and F C M. Now therefore be resolved, the Council approved the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Thompson and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for the Sisal Program. We'll go to Administration for support.
Just to indicate that, uh, this resolution would signify that, uh, formal agreement with F C M, uh, for this program, uh, of which we hosted, uh, delegates from, uh, Peru and Colombia, uh, earlier this year, uh, at the end of May, at the start of June. Uh, so really that, uh, this is that formal, uh, letter of understanding, uh, of which Counsel has had the opportunity to review and comment on.
Thank you. We'll go to the mover, Counsel Smoak. Anything to add?
As being part of the, the delegation, uh, when Colombian Peru was here, it's, uh, very important. Uh, other parts of the world, uh, share the mining, uh, and, uh, community differences and the sameness a- against us, and I think this is a very good idea. It brings, uh, makes the world a bit smaller place.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie Denasby, thank you. Next, we have bylaws. Uh, this is the first reading of bylaw nineteen forty-six, two zero one six. Organizational Procedures, Bylaw Amendment. We have a bylaw nineteen forty-six, two thousand sixteen, and a memo from the Executive Assistant. This is Resolution two zero one six two three five, moved by Counsel Foley, seconded by Counsel Byer. Be resolved the bylaw nineteen forty-six, two zero one six, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson, to amend bylaw number nineteen thirty-one dash two zero one five, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson, to govern the organization of the City of Thompson and the committees thereof, and to regulate the proceedings and conduct of Counsel and the committees thereof, be introduced and read a first time. We'll go to Administration for support.
Just to indicate that, uh- The Counsel is required, uh, by the Municipal Act to review their procedural bylaw at least once per term. Uh, Counsel has, uh, obviously, uh, in this term, reviewed it more than that. Uh, this, uh, latest review, uh, initiated, uh, and conducted at the Finance and Administration Committee, which, uh, has a responsibility for the review or initiating the review of this bylaw. Uh, and really the intent, uh, of the amendment is to clarify, uh, provisions of the General Inquiry Section, uh, of the current organizational procedural bylaw. Uh, so really the, uh, the, uh, the change is the deletion of, of the words in section, uh, fifty-eight, uh, the, or the affairs of the municipality, uh, will be removed as part of this, uh, bylaw.
Thank you. Uh, go to the mover, Counsel Foley. Anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Counsel Wong? Thank you. Uh, Counsel Clota?
Yes, I can support this idea that we should be stifling, uh, the opinions of our constituents.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, I missed you. Counsel Madichuk?
I, I also kind of support this because I think the more open and transparent we are, the better, and, uh, that's moving away from that.
Uh, any other questions, Counsel? Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Uh, in a recorded vote, Counsel Foley, it, Carrie, sorry, Counsel Foley in favor, Counsel Smoak, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counsel Byer, Counsel Ellis, uh, Mayor Dennis Fenske, voting opposed, Counsel Wong, Counsel Madichuk, and Counsel Clota. Uh, first reading of bylaw nineteen forty-seven, two zero one six, Counsel Authorized Borrowing Bylaw. Uh, this is Resolution two zero one six two three six, moved by Counsel Madichuk, seconded by Counsel Byer. Be resolved the bylaw nineteen forty-seven, two zero one six, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson, to Counsel Authorized Borrowing Authority, be introduced and read a first time. We'll go to Administration for support.
Um, this is just a process to, required to counsel the authorized borrowing for the, from two thousand and ten, for the local improvement for the residential waste cards. Um, because the purchase of the cards, as well as the collection of the revenue occurred in the same year, no borrowing, uh, was required to be undertaken.
Counsel, uh, Counsel Madichuk, anything to add? Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denasby, thank you. Uh, next, we have first reading of bylaw nineteen forty-nine, two zero one six. Zoning Bylaw Amendment for Commercial Mixed Use. Uh, Resolution two zero one six two three seven, moved by Counsel Foley, seconded by Counsel Byer. Be resolved the bylaw nineteen forty-nine, two zero one six, being a bylaw of the City of Thompson, uh, to amend the City of Thompson zoning bylaw eighteen ninety-one dash two zero one two, as amended to amend figure thirty-five, bracket, page, uh, P G twenty-nine, bracket, permitted conditional uses in the C dash M U zone of the City of Thompson zoning bylaw eighteen ninety-one dash two zero one two, by adding hotel or motel, has a permitted use in the commercial mixed-use C, uh, bra- C hyphen M U zone, be introduced and read a first time. We'll go to Administration for support.
Uh, sure. Just by way of background, uh, both the city manager and I had, um, initial meetings with, uh, representatives from M Z N with regards to the new urban reserve here in Thompson. Um, what you'll see in this, uh, commercial mixed-use zone currently, uh, there are several hotel establishments already there. Um, so we are amending the zoning bylaw to allow for future development of these hotels. What these hotels were in previous zoning bylaws, uh, essentially have been grandfathered in to, uh, be dubbed legal existing non-conforming uses. So, the intent of this bylaw amendment is to, uh, permit, um, the hotel motel use, uh, for development, because, uh, those representatives have indicated that they wish to, uh, develop, uh, in the, in the future with regards to that particular use and a few other uses that are currently permitted. Uh, so, we've had some discussions at the Development Review Committee level, both on the twentieth of October and November third. Uh, no concerns, uh, or, um, significant comments were given. And so, with this, uh, first reading, we'll go ahead and advertise and post, uh, in keeping with the provisions of the Planning Act, um, moving up to a second and third reading and a public hearing in the future.
Uh, Counsel Foley as the mover. Anything to add? Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Denasby, thank you. Uh, that concludes the bylaws. We'll move into the Mayor's Report. Uh, this is covering activities of November first to the fourteenth. Uh, met with Valley, U C N, Northern Manitoba Sector Council, and the School District of, on November first. This is in regards to the Industrial Skills and Training Center. The organizational meeting of, of Counsel was held on November second. The skid, school, the, city school liaison meeting was hosted by the city on November ninth. Attended and brought greetings at the Remembrance Day Service on, on November, on November eleventh. The weekly C I M T F conference calls and the biweekly water treatment plant meetings continue. Uh, the budget meetings took place on November first and November eighth. Uh, various committee meetings were held, Development Review, Public Works and Infrastructure, Finance and Admin, Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs, and Public Safety. And by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim November thirteenth to nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, as Manitoba Addictions Awareness Week in the City of Thompson. And by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim November fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, as World Diabetes Day in the City of Thompson. Uh, with that, I'll go to Counsel to report on any activities over that timeframe. Uh, Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Yes, I've covered a few things. First and foremost was, uh, Saturday, November the fifth, um, at the wishes of this Counsel, I attended the Valley Night at the Norman North Star Hockey Game, and gave the announcement that, moving forward from that night on, that the T R C C would now be renamed and recognized as the Valley Regional Community Center. Um, I know there are many of you others there. I don't see you all, 'cause there were about nine hundred citizens there. So, I took part in that with Mark Scott representing Valley, and they also presented the city with a five thousand dollar Jason Lucas painting, which you can see, I'm not sure if it's installed yet, but it's gonna be going up the stairs above the play structure, if you're familiar with the lobby area of the V R C C. I also took part on November eighth, the Aboriginal Veterans Day Service at Wapnauck School. Uh, City Manager Gary Sepatelli was there. I do believe there may have been some other staff there, and I apologize. I did see Counsel Clota there also. Uh, and the City of Thompson flag was a part of the grand entry centrance, uh, entrance at that event, and we got a tour of Wapnauck School also. And I also attended, attended today, November fourteenth, the A F M Key and Bannock, along with Counsel Byer and Counsel Smoak were there. And we had a tour of that, uh, absolutely amazing A F M facility that we have here. We should be very proud of it. Uh, M L A Kelly Bindle was there also, and uh, gave reference to your proclamation today that this is the week of addictions awareness that we should all be aware of, and aware of the programs they offer there.
Thank you. Counsel Foley?
Uh, yes. Uh, actually, this Saturday, uh, I spent the evening with our local R C M P detachment doing a ride-along, uh, within the community from, uh, the hours of six in the evening till, uh, eight in the morning. Uh, Sunday, uh, November thirteenth, I spent, uh, the evening, uh, with the Fire and E M S crew to kind of wrap up the, uh, the public safety, uh, experience that I was going through with, uh, meeting, riding along with C S O, Fire, E M S, and R C M P. Uh, that being said, within, uh, working within those three groups and seeing everybody working at the ground level, um, I am absolutely astounded by the professionalism and the dedication and the willingness to go above and beyond by all members that I've, uh, come across. Um, I can't begin to say enough, uh, great things, uh, in regards to the experience. The, uh, especially, uh, last night, dealing with the Fire E M S crew, I commend, uh, our Chief and Deputy Chief here for, uh, running a very tight ship. Uh, they were very professional. They showed me, uh, absolutely everything in regards to the process. We went on a couple ambulance rides. Uh, fortunately, we didn't have any fire rides, which is good. Um, all in all, I just want to say that, uh, you know, it's, uh, it was a very, uh, humbling experience to see what, uh, what public safety, uh, um, our public safety employees deal with on a regular basis. And I recommend, again, to anyone within Counsel to, uh, take on that opportunity.
Counsel Smoak?
Uh, yes, I'll be following Kathy around to hockey and Remembrance Day and Addictions Foundation. I would like to say our conference calls on the Northern De- delegation, uh, with, uh, the federal government, uh, over the OmniTrax and the Port of Church were continuing. We also had a conference call last week over Via Rail, which was, uh, very good. And I would like to pass on, uh, uh, condolences to Fabia Joan Moniak. I attended, uh, her service on Thursday. It was a come and go, and it was very nice. She was a longtime resident of Thompson.
Counsel Byer?
In addition to bumping into other counselors, I, I attended the A G M for Heritage North Museum, and, uh, just want to, uh, applaud the very small volunteer base that they have there for the work that they do. They are looking for more volunteers, and, uh, if anybody has been thinking that they would like to contribute to something in the community, I think that would be worthwhile. Also, the Boys and Girls Club, who continues to run, uh, a number and variety of programs for our youth in Thompson. The, um, Thompson Playhouse, another volunteer organization. I mention these because we always think that volunteerism is dying in Thompson. There's still a lot of volunteers out there in a variety of, of, uh, of activities. And also applaud the organizers of the Crafters Event and all of the people who put up booths and, and participated. I realize these are home-based businesses, and that's good. Uh, entrepreneurism on any level, unless it's illegal, of course, is, um, I think more than welcome in Thompson and, and good to see, so.
Thank you. Any other Counsel reports? Seeing none, need a motion to adjourn. Uh, Counsel Foley, seconded by Counsel Ellis. All those in favor? Thank you. We stand adjourned. Have a good evening.